What's their name over by Willie that had all them get out.
Wendell.
Yeah, Wendell.
My relatives.
When the corn was tall.
Who aren't you related to?
He's a cat.
For God's sake.
Last week.
Fifty-nine south.
I don't know about that one.
Kill the.
It's like a big fence pole.
It was one of the regions.
Yeah, boy.
Killed the cow.
Killed the cow.
Didn't have a tag in it, probably wasn't anybody's.
No.
They had to go to Arkansas.
I know it was.
Well, that's.
Heard from the brothers.
She says, good time.
Good time.
Oh, all right, let's get started. Go ahead.
Before you start.
Yeah, we're not, we're gonna start in about a minute.
Okay, um. The Christmas we say children for children's fundraiser that we did last week, we wanted to let you know. Employees raised one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Wow. Super, what a great meeting.
Great meeting.
And we thank our popcorn poppers and our cleanup crew and Mary got candy bars ready, so we just appreciate everybody's help.
So we'll call you work. Good jobs.
It's amazing what a free bag of popcorn will loosen first strings up.
Isn't it amazing? It's the smell.
So we just wanted to let you guys know that everyone's doing a great job and.
Alright, so.
You guys are awesome. Thank you. Thanks for being supporters though.
Yeah. Jerry's not gonna make it. She's got the flu, so we just.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. What a lovely morning, muddy shoes. Rain hit me in the face. Nice pleasant deal. Manian freezing.
Perfect fall day.
Yep. We'll call as many in order everybody had a chance to review the amended agenda. Any conflicts of interest with the amended agenda. Can get. Fear none, uh, we'll continue with the reading of the minute.
December sixth, twenty twenty-two, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Cal Schultz, Chairman presiding. Member members present Hayden Rossberg Schultz Gugan vote minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. The board recognized hiring of Hope Jensen, part-time ARNP. Family planning nurse at public health. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by vote to approve the following resolution transferring funds. One million, three hundred and forty-five thousand hereby transferred from the rural basic front fund. Into secondary roads fund voting I Hayden Rossberg Schultz Gugan vote motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by vote seconded by school to approve tax abatement. Of thirty twenty-six, two hundred and eightieth street, Dennison Glen Barn goer. Three car garage, two-story addition motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Hayden to approve the tax abatement. Twenty-four sixty-three Donna Reed Road Cory and Steph Schmackey a new house. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rossberg to set time date. For public hearing vacating street in Kenwood. To December twenty-seven at ten fifteen AM. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Hayden to approve the wind turbine construction compliance certificate. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by vote, seconded by Hayden to approve DL County twenty-eighty agreement. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by vote, seconded by Rossberg for the approval of con. Contract between L and L builders in Crawford County for the restroom renovation. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded to board adjourned eleven thirty-eight AM agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty PM. Proceeding the next meeting.
Alright. Sound alright? We wanted some reports, uh. Called it our auditor yesterday in regards to uh opening of bids for city center remodel and she said we received none, so we have no bids to open, so. What's our next step?
I would like to discuss that if we could. Um, it's my understanding that the bids didn't come in because they felt that the RFP was incomplete when it came to the electrical part of it, that there wasn't enough direction on exactly what needed to be done. Electrical leading wise. And so.
That's why our one bid didn't come back.
Right, it's my understanding. Um, I was talking to Terry this morning and so we were possibly and we'll have a maybe next week on the agenda to discuss and take action. If we could uh hire uh one of the local electricians to kind of guide us through that RFP, so it has the. Exact things that need to be done electrically because it was too broad on what we were expecting with those four um. Meters in there and all the different, you know, and with the generator and the uh IT department. It was just too broad for anybody to say exactly how much it's gonna cost to make all that happen. So next week, I think we should put it on the agenda to discuss it. I also feel it would be a good idea. I had gone to uh the city hall and got all the list of all of the uh contractors that are registered with the city of Dennison. That possibly we send the invitation to everybody that's registered to work in the city of Dennison. A letter telling them when we're going to have our uh walkthrough. I see a cringe.
Yeah, the only reason I cringe is because we leave somebody out.
Right, we want. We need to make sure that that's acceptable with the attorney. I mean, you know, as far as.
These are just suggestions that I have to know. But it's a way, because you know what we hear from some people is, well, I just don't read the paper. I just don't listen to the radio. I just didn't see it. You know, and so I feel if everybody's on the plane saying, you would never want to just call the people we know. I think if we go get the list, which I did, do you still have that list? I dropped it off. Maybe possibly. But if we just keep seeing everybody saying you're registered in the uh city of Dennison to do work, and so we're letting you know we're gonna have a a bid letting. Here on a certain day, uh please, you know, so that's just a thought that we can maybe do to keep this process uh rolling. And uh so we'll put that on the agenda for next week. It's okay with everybody to uh think about what we can do to get the word out and think about what we can do to make sure that. Especially in that electrical uh part of it, that we're making sure that we're hitting all the boxes with that.
Questions? You have reached out to every city hall and asked for registered bids from, I mean.
They have to be able, they have to be registered uh in work in the city of Dennison, so that should be at Dennison. If you're Lynn Tyrone and you aren't registered to work in the city of Dennison.
I'm just meaning it.
Well, no, but.
If they're not registered at Dennison, then there's something else.
They should be up at city hall.
They could still get, well, they could still have the opportunity to get registered, even if they're not red on their current registered list.
Yeah, I would think so. I don't know what the process is to get registered.
That's my only, that's why I cringed.
It's a, the the property is in the city of Dennison. But any suggestions to make, because that's exactly why I felt getting the list from the city hall of Dennison means, because uh baiting is is listed up with Dennison. The guy that did give the bid is is a registered, so if you're a small contractor in the county, you're not registered in the city. Even if you hear about it, you know, I'm just suggesting that we send that out as a way of getting interested. If you, we can still put it in the other publications. If you're not registered, you can't, you couldn't do that job. You have to be registered with the city of Dennison to do a project and then you reach out to the city of Dennison itself for those registered. You almost need to reach out to the city halls and all the other community to say, you're registered. But construction should come up and register for Dennison to be on this job if they're interested.
Let's uh just think that through over the week.
That's why we don't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The same reason I hadn't, I had my meeting last week that I was gonna cancel due to the weather. If I, if I miss one person.
Yep, nope.
That I didn't call and cancel, almost canceled, they show up a thing on my face.
I didn't call anybody.
But I don't know, Gene, I mean, your, your points are valid. I will give you that, but.
It wouldn't take much more time to send a letter to Charter Oak, Kyren, Dow City. And say Dennison has, the supervisors have a project going on, you know, you know, but. That's, that's still not gonna, that's up to them then, because if they're not registered with the city of Dennison, they wouldn't be registered in the city of Charter Oak. To come in and do, you know, does Charter Oak or Manila have, uh, do you have to be registered to work in Manila?
I don't know. Yeah, you take it slippery slope, you only ask to put it out to Dennison and that.
But that's where the project is.
But that, but the list has, I wish we could find it right now. It's got baitings on it. It's got people from uh Omaha on it, I believe, people from Sioux City. Because they've come into Dennison and they, they've shown interest in working and uh.
What's it, what's it require to get that certification?
I think it's twenty-five dollars and uh, because Adam has it and they fill it out every year, um, just kind of.
Find proof of insurance.
You have to have your proof of insurance. You have to uh.
Typical business.
Yeah, just a typical business that, so they just know that you're somebody that just doesn't fly in. Uh, and gonna do a bunch of work in Dennison and leave and leave a sign.
Tell one of your health groups.
Yes.
Think about it next week.
Well, we got.
There's no perfect system.
Do we always get a direct?
Well, obviously, the way that it was, it didn't work really well, so I'm trying to think outside the box. Um, I could probably pull it up here real quick. My, my computer seems to. Uh, but just a thought.
It's a bill.
I think so.
What's it in there for?
I don't know, but it came to.
I want me to continue on with my supervisor since I've already interrupted you.
Yeah, okay.
I interrupted you, sorry. I thought that looked like one of your.
Well, um, last week, unfortunately, on Tuesday, I came down with uh. The influenza A. We were supposed to have our mental health, a big mental health meeting that's going to really lay out where we're at dollar-wise and so forth. But Don Metzer happened to be ill and I had called and said that I was going to have to zoom in because I was, I was contagious that day. And another person had called in that they weren't, were ill uh and they happened to feel that this particular meeting was too important. To do over a Zoom meeting because they really needed to go face to face and have all of our hands out, so we're doing that tomorrow. So I did not have that meeting. Um, I also did not make it over to Carol to uh the region twelve meeting. And I had called Rick to see if I could do Zoom, but he had already ordered a bunch of food and he was afraid of the offering, so nobody would come because that was kind of like this, so. They get to go, but I did make it yesterday to the public house meeting at noon and uh, you know, on the agenda. I have it here just a minute ago. Right now. Oh, they have an appointment up. Patty Ritchie's term is up again, and so. You know, we're gonna have to be thinking about what we want to do there. Um, she's been on the board since June of two thousand and nine. They tell us she uh was in on a Zoom yesterday. Uh, we also did not get one of our grants that we applied for. Uh, we were twenty, there was a twenty-four point swing, so they're gonna appeal that. Uh, they had some personnel changes, which we always see. This are really up, you know, they had hired her and they thought she was gonna be excellent, and then she just couldn't seem to get in for any training, and so then she, she was there like. A week and decided it wasn't for her, so. They have seven hospice patients right now and twenty skilled uh nursing patients is kind of an update there. Um. So basically then we had Lynn's report on his uh, where he's at with his budget. And so he's telling us that he's only used up thirty-seven percent of his five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar tax asking. But part of that is because hospice is not staffed, so they're missing about three or four employees that would normally be paid out of that, so we, I feel that that's one of the reasons.
Are they keeping up?
Well, they, they, according to the report from the hospice, they did have turned a few people away, not necessarily because they don't have the staff, just because it wasn't somebody that they thought fit into their program.
Maybe we don't need to replace the staff that's present.
Well, you know, those are things that uh. The awkwardness of all of that is that we don't have a say on that board, so um, we just kind of.
Do we have an influence of that board?
We're.
Couldn't have a say on that board. Yeah, we're autonomous from the board, so it's not, you know, unless we actually have somebody that we were appointed to be on the board. We, I'm there to give a proper supervisor's report, which is really not, I have no say, nobody has a say. And so I've been challenged to uh think of another board that we uh do their budget, but we don't have a, a, a seat at the table.
So we give money.
I don't.
Don't have a say, and we got people from Carroll County on it.
That's what it is right now.
So check all boxes so far. Yeah.
What?
Checking the hell out of his boxes here.
Well, so that's something that we'll just have to think about in those appointments.
I think that's the.
What is, what is this appointment for?
Well, it would be in January on us.
What, what influence do we have on that board?
No.
I mean, there's like nine-one-one and some of these other ones.
But it's by, but at the same time, it's gotta be, they want autonomous from politics. So that's why it's autonomous. That's why we're allowed to have.
And don't get money from.
Then we allow to get one seat.
We get one seat.
No, because that's, it's, it's in the charter. It's in the charter and that's what we do. I don't, I'm just saying, that's what the I code says.
That we can have a supervisor on it. I've been.
Right, that's what I'm saying. A supervisor.
We can have a supervisor.
The question I had, I got deep into this with my knee, that's what my knee is. But the deep thing in there is, is what? Why are we signing their checks and they have to approve them and we get them after they're signed by them and pay?
The, the hard thing for me my first year was uh, you know, when there were ten thousand dollar raises given. And all we do is approve it, and then when we try to adjust that with the budget, we're told that they're just gonna stop their services and cut people, you know, and so. It's all happened and the only thing we can do is, and if we could have that voice at the table while those decisions are going on, you know, maybe there could be some influence.
There, there's another side to this that's not coming out is that there are other people that do this. There are people in the business and do this.
Public health business?
Yes.
In this business?
Hospice, hospice, lacrosse comes in and they have, they have, we compete with it.
I've gone and got.
We compete with.
I've gone and visited them.
Private sector versus public.
My daughter, and I'll excuse myself for many of that, but my daughter does work for lacrosse on a daily basis, twice a week or once a week, depends on what she wants.
In Crawford County?
Actually, she's down in Shelby County. And another one south, two or three south of there, and she has not done one up here. She's, they, she's asked them to leave her off with them up here. Because she would not want anything probably bad.
Well, they're doing a little research on it, uh, and about what they mean by autonomous. Basically, you know, Board of Supervisors can have. Uh, it basically says the way that the supervisors can control, or I miss a big word, is uh by their appointments on the board.
Yep.
That's the only.
Right, as long as they meet the criteria, is that for?
Yeah. Well, there isn't really the, the criteria that we think. We need to have a doctor on there, but there's sponsors on boards in Shelby County, you know, so. I talked to one of my, helped to.
We really need to evaluate that and. You have to.
I like to bring it up so that we all have a chance to think about it and uh do some research and uh so that our decisions are based on fact and uh what we can and cannot do, so. That was the meeting. It wasn't too terribly long, um, but that was the information that I gathered from that. And I can pass the numbers around. I can see serious swings in income. Uh, you know, hospice in September was forty-two thousand seven, uh, thirty-seven, and they'd been running fifty-four and fifty-one. Uh, and now in October, it looks like they're at seventy-eight thousand, so the numbers really were fluctuating in all of these categories. It is, and it would, and it should be, you know, you.
It'll probably go up now.
Yeah.
Your.
Public health has such a great mission as far as, you know, the I smiles and all of those different programs that they facilitate. Um, it's really an important one to fund.
Another.
Yeah, so I'll pass this around.
Good.
Um, further than that, it was a little bit of a short week, but uh I had two days where they were completely lost to me. I don't know what day it was, so.
My dad has problems, but every day of the week, you know.
Well. I'm back.
You're back, huh? Yeah, I'm back.
Yeah.
You still on vacation?
Ty, what do you have?
You know, uh, we had a budget session for IT. Went over some stuff that uh. I mean, it's obviously you gotta create a budget, but we kind of helped him go over some things and clean up some. Stuff that we really didn't think he needed. Uh, he is talking about a pay raise and he compared it to other, other counties, which.
Don't we love.
Carol was over a hundred?
So. Ottoman?
Not Ottoman, no, no. Ottoman just hired for seventy-five thousand.
They had a new hire at seventy-five, which is.
Was it Carol? It might have been.
I think it was Carol, it's their lead one.
I think he was asking for over six, six point two, three percent or something like that. Jake was, yeah.
And, but with all he trimmed out of it, I mean, is portable. I mean, do we, do we work on getting him up to where, I mean, if Ottoman, which is a smaller county, is hiring a new IT. At seventy-five, which is no more than Jake, is more than Jake now, and Ottoman is how the guy in Carol got the big bump, isn't it? He went down. And interviewed for that job and then Carol threw a huge check at him to keep him. I mean, it's just, I don't know, just something to think about as we're stewing here. But uh.
Just getting started.
Yeah, that's right. But uh. I mean, I don't know.
They have two.
A good check. He's, he's, I thought he had a four-year degree. He's got two. Jake, but he does a good job.
Yeah.
We gotta get him a little bit more of an extended vocabulary, because he just leveraged the hell out of everything.
Yeah, I like Clayton Alrich. I don't know if he's got any degree, but he just, when it comes to computers.
He's just gifted.
Yeah, he's, I asked him, he said he taught himself.
A lot of people.
Yeah. When the FBI gave him a job offer.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You been hacking him or?
Side sword on that. I mean, to tell you the smartest guy, I had, yeah, my computers years ago got hacked, so I called him up and he came over. He got behind their firewall and hacked their computer.
Wow.
The IT guy.
The guy you want on your side.
Yeah.
You think tough kids?
Yeah, yeah.
He says this will teach him a lesson.
He was in the play with it, or C swimmer.
But uh, I mean, it was, kind of went over, trimmed some things that he thought would be good projects that really weren't brutally necessary and cons- considering all we've spent on three sixty-five and all these things recently, I, we thought maybe a.
And our timekeeper thing would be timed.
It's in the works. I mean, it's on.
Is it back kind of to the top, the cream?
Well, that's kind of.
Well, and it's, I gotta get on Amy's radar too now.
That's an.
Gone right now.
Correct, it's an Amy and Jake thing, so I think that they could.
Yep.
Anyway, and we did talk about that.
Yep, awesome.
Uh, other than that, uh. Turn this sucker down. Yeah, we're charging to come up next. I don't. Anything else on the IT thing that. Really had to work, you know, just going over the budget. Most, most of the stuff he had on there were things that we have to do, you know, all the licenses and all them other fees that are must-dos. Uh, I'm supposed to have a meeting with Chris this morning, Whitaker. Um, so we can continue. We're gonna try to redo the uh, Lega City stuff and uh.
You, you know, I, I, I think. You hit it on the head uh about going out. And doing a meeting.
I'm sorry.
Actually doing one of our meetings in the evening and just moving around.
Taking the, taking the super bag down the road.
Yeah. You take it down the road during the day, a lot of these more towns, nobody's there for the day.
Right.
So it's, you know, do it night then.
Like special meeting or something to just to have like, be like the only agenda item?
Well, he's gonna.
I don't know.
I don't know.
He's got a, the Lega City thing that he's talking about is Carol's got one pretty effective, and if you look at the top growth of all of their. Communities comparatively speaking, I mean, which town of theirs isn't? You know, I mean, I'm sure Willie's probably not growing anymore, but I mean, you look at Glidden and you look at Manning and Breeda, Templeton. Now granted, they've all got.
Maple River.
Community leaders.
Maple River is like, would be like Buoy.
Yeah.
Got a bar.
But you know, they, they've got, they've got community leaders in these towns that are pushing it forward too.
Yeah.
But you know, maybe that's why, that's why, you know, with Chris, he, he's talking about kind of trying to devise a, a seat, uh. Lega Cities that's like what he's got over there with them. And, and I mean, that's what him and I are gonna talk about today.
You mean Carol's or Sue's?
Carol County.
Okay, because otherwise it's Sack County's, it's got the thing. They do, they meet four times a year and.
Yeah.
And they uh.
Well, that's what we were trying to.
They put on a nice show. It's, it's, and they move it around within the county and, and they do that, and that's in the evening.
You know, the thing is, we were trying to do that, if you remember, and, but we didn't get anybody from the east side of the county when it was in Charter Oak.
Well.
We got Manila, and that was the furthest away. I mean, Westside didn't show up, Vale didn't even show up. And no, we did have, no, I don't remember. It's last week since.
No, they were there. We, we were.
Gotta get.
We were up there for dinner.
Yeah, so we gotta, we gotta make sure that we're figuring this out, but I, him and I are gonna start working on that because we gotta try to do something to help.
One of the things with the smaller towns, though, that those uh required matching funds and they're always struggling for funds and how to match to. It, it's so worth it if you can match it because what it, I was on. The first year that they offered at Dennison, and man, it was just amazing. Get some of these older houses that were kind of starting to deteriorate, get new windows in them, and get new roofs on them. And that's a grant, and they forgive that after five years, and so if you can get uh, well, it's actually twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, extending over twenty-five thousand falls into a different rate. But it costs the city of Dennison a matching, you know, but what it did to bring some of our houses back, I mean, it's well worth it, so we really have to sell it to these smaller towns that that investment is gonna keep these small communities alive.
What I was, what I was curious about is instead of just inviting city councils, I mean, most of our little towns at least have a. Commercial club or a little chamber of their own.
Yeah.
If you invite that too, you know, like you're talking about matching funds, you know, everybody needs more people in their town.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the kind of community effort you need.
Yeah.
To get your matching funds.
So.
You know, if they work together and have a little fundraiser, barbecue, whatever, that kind of deal to create them matching funds.
To get that investment in their community, because the city councils are gonna say the same thing, you know, we just don't have the money, but if you, if the community comes together. This is, I want something in our town. Everybody pitches in, you're gonna have it happen a lot faster than if your city clerk is there going, I don't know, I'm gonna pay for this stuff. I have to. I'm out. I can't, we can't.
And then they don't even tell the council.
Yeah, they don't even.
I don't need them having big ideas.
Yeah, yeah, and it is extra work for uh banks and things like that. There's a lot of paperwork, but uh.
But you know.
Testify it was well worth our time.
The banks themselves, you know, I mean, gosh, who, who benefits from nicer community?
Right.
More people borrow money in that community.
There's ways of making that happen. We just have to get real serious.
And that's why, oh yeah, that's, that's kind of what we're up to.
Alright, that's my thought.
So anyway, thank you. Appreciate it. And uh, I got a busy week this week. Real busy, actually, even the wife noticed. She never notices. We do, I'm, we're doing one, two, three, four, five, five interviews for the CDC.
Good.
And uh.
Somebody rolling into New Zealand?
No, no, and, but we did talk about maybe keeping the window open for a little bit on more interviews, because we really didn't close it. Or at least that's my understanding, we didn't. Um, we got some, some good people, but uh, none of them really just. Jumped over the fence at me and said, hey, I am your business developer, you know, I'm your community developer for as far as the business and. Because to me, that's where we're, where we're still coming up short is our economic development in the county, in particular, even in our industrial hub, Dennison. I think that, you know, I mean, it's, it's a big project, and when you're sitting there with just a few people in the office, it's probably a load, but. It's the load that's important. If you want to have more people in your office, you gotta create more tax dollars out there and start demonstrating you're worth it. You know, it's one of the things that we sit here and talk about when we're going over how much we're gonna give them.
Yep.
You know, I don't know that any of you guys have ever, since I've sat here, complained about giving more for, or giving the fifty thousand for the development side. It's the tourism side. That doesn't affect the entirety of the county. But I mean, I'm, if we could get somebody that's a stallion from, you know, one of these other, you know, or great mayor, anyway. Trying to be gender neutral here, get somebody great that's been in a county that's developed well, you know, whether it's like Carroll or Sack or Sioux County or one of these other ones. Or one of these other ones, you know, everybody else is. Everybody else is. I mean, that's, we don't get, get these people, I mean, everybody else is head hunting somebody on like Crawford County can, you know.
I'm talking from like. Working in the county, but the, the, the mill gals will get shocked.
Is she there's city planner? Is that what she does? But that's.
She's not a clerk, she's not a.
A planner, like what Terry. But anyway, I think that, uh. You know, those are some of the things that I really want to focus on this night, you know, as we did this, I said, I just wanna be able to ask business questions, you know, I mean, that's my. Thing on this hiring committee, anyway.
Requiring that they live in Crawford County or?
Well, that's what I keep saying, that's my, right now, I don't, I don't know if we have a consensus on that, because like Mariah lives in Ute, she's. You know, she may be somebody that's on the list. And, uh, you know, different people like that, you know, that live just outside of the county or like somebody would get from Carol, I guess. The part I wanted to bring up, if somebody was over from Carol, you know, that's, that was one of their points, and I said, really, if you're, you're more invested in the county, if you live in it.
No, we had the guy from Shelby.
Yeah, well, you know, in any event, so that's, those are some of the things we're internally discussing yet too.
Eric and I are having nightmares.
To me, that, I'll, I'll, let me put it, for my vote, being, living in this county weighs a lot, weighs a lot.
It's a commitment.
Exactly, and then I have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention at the end of the week. Haven't been there for a while, but, uh, there is a CDC meeting Friday, so, but I missed that if it's the same week, the same day as. Unless I zoom in, which we'll see, um, that's pretty much it for me for the week, I didn't have any crazy calls, I've had a few. Call, had some tower calls, we're done. But, uh. The, uh.
That's it for me, Kyle.
Alright.
I can proceed.
You got any, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
You pulled that out over those cold papers, I didn't grab my. Right behind your head. And, and it was a policy council meeting, which is where we bring in everybody from. There's four from each county and stuff like that, numbers were up there and, uh, you're right, we fought the weather back and forth all day. We had delayed this meeting from. Before this till, till now, or till the other night. Because we were waiting for the trend, the things to trans, transit. And we didn't get a complete thing and, and they asked us to do a few things, so we waited and hold that off. Until next spring and during, do that at the March meeting, thank you, and then do that. So we just basically, everything that was running well, our fiftieth year is coming up, so we're gonna do one of fifty year. Deal this next summer, maybe actually kind of fall there a little bit. They, they wanted to have that to bring everybody in and do all their, their recognizing and all that stuff from there. They, kind of winding up the city, uh, you know, year, end of the year stuff for the, uh. Lot of Chris, Chris's stuff, and he's, so he's out starting to work on. All his stuff out there, the, the pop, the meat poultry should have a. Operator here within the next week or so, so.
That's across the whole state average.
So we'll have that up there and stuff like that.
What, meat and poultry?
We, we got a fifteen million dollar. And we can go out and promote and, and have a person.
That's for that.
It's, it's wide open as far as what it does, it can go to a smaller, moderate sized thing or. You know, or a smaller one can go in, and he's kinda has a background of a little bit of building. Trying to get. What they called him before.
Sometimes I can help you.
Very simple. I'm gonna go for that TV show on there, you gotta guess this word. But it's, it's, it's honest, it's getting started, he's got a guy hired as of last week and it's all set to go. So if he's, if a community or town is looking at some form of, uh, locker. You know, or further. Fixing up, uh, working the animals and it's, and it's open to. Uh, cattle, hogs. Chickens, anything that's on that, he, he had a guy, he had gotten an inquiry from a guy who has an elk. Business about raising elk, you know, you know, so if, if, there's some things out there, now I guess the fifteen minute million. This is like our revolving loan funds, so if we get it in there and they start paying, it just kinda rolls and rolls and rolls. We're just getting administration fees out of it and running it there, and it's kind of a fire alley and looking at it, so. I really kinda excited about it and see how it goes, I think it will, we're the only. There were three states that, that got money out of it, and we got fifteen, fifteen million.
So that, how.
No, large, there's a certain size or cutoff, it can't be. Out here that.
How will people start knowing about that? I mean, what's.
This is part of that job of this, this guy here, so get it that way, but.
Sometimes I feel bad about that though, because you know, local banks, unless I was on four years ago, we wouldn't have known what was. So I just feel like.
You, you, a lot of them you would have, they would, they would work with. You know, we'll pick out someone who'll say, you know, where's your, where's your financing, they're gonna, it's like getting the house. We're getting, getting money for a business, you know, we gave a. We gave a, one out the other day. And I don't wanna say where it is, but there's four gals and they're opening a thing over again. It's, you know, out of our other funds, we're pulling this money out for that and. For, for qualifying and stuff, two of them for cloud, yeah. Standup money behind them, two of them had. Lake, lake homes on, uh, Okopoji. Seven hundred thousand, million dollar houses, and, but they're investing, I guess there's four of them went together and they're gonna have a. You know, they're, they're set to pay, so they, they got money and the bank approved it and, uh.
Could you use that if, if you, like, say there was, there was, there's grants out there for lockers? Like yours, it's gotta be paid back, can you use that for like your match? See, so if a guy needed to have, person needed to have. But you, you know, so you can use a, a match from, you know, use your loan to create the match. Is that possible?
Not on this one. You have the cat, this is a cattle deal, it's a whole.
If you had a two million dollar grant, you need a two hundred fifty thousand dollar matching funds, you could pull.
You get to use, use that two hundred and fifty borrowed from you guys.
But they, they're not allowing. Out here. They're not allowing Smithfield. A monarch might be a, might be a customer of it, if they're planning on doing some building and stuff like, monitor, there you go. They're doing something along that line. That's, that's how large we can go, they, they, they've got a.
Apple was part of that when they brought the chicken plant in, but it was most spent different funds, cause remember.
Yeah, we stood funding that, but they, they would qualify if they were to increase and do something else and add something to their.
Kyle, I have a question for you on this, if you give your, Eric, are you done, I'm sorry? If you guys have to have a tractor tire fixed, what's that usually cost? You gotta call Alec out or something.
Oh, I don't, I don't, well, I guess I don't know what it all, probably a hundred dollar service call.
I would guess that.
Yeah, I don't know what it all, it probably what it all entitles if it's.
I'm just trying to figure out, call it, Paul had two tire repairs on here and they were four thirty two and four ninety seven. So I didn't know if you had to buy a truck tire on a, on a repair or.
Possibly.
Fix you guys, well, you guys have gotta pop them off the, the big ones, I don't, I've never had to fix track, tractor.
Loader tires can be somewhat challenging or something, you know, I don't. Yeah, yeah, it sounds like about the entire.
Expect if they were over somewhere else.
Alright, I just wanted, I, I seen that, holy crap, I'm.
That was it, and then the, the monarch, uh. Travel thing is going good, you know, they were still doing the guys up to, uh, we increased up to the, uh. Bullstein, to the plant up there. And they get the eye of growth one going and. But we're, they're taking, they're taking a boatload of them up there, and then they're servicing two ships. Two bus. Alright, um, so then, that was pretty much it for the meeting, and we got her done and. We had four, and then, one of our guys, who's on the board, showed up at one thirty or. Twelve thirty, he shot the meeting, he looked at the old sheet and we converted that over.
I don't think Sarah went over, and I would drive with her for the first one, but.
That it?
Yeah, I'm done with this one.
Alright, I did have a conservation board meeting Wednesday night, uh, not much good news coming out of there. As far as conservation, Nelson's Park water, campground upgrades, that's gonna be. I don't know what we're gonna do, might be faced with a tough decision here if, uh. DNR don't come up with a plan or something that's equitable to us, I don't know how we can afford to. First estimates between six to eight hundred thousand dollars to get water out there that's potable.
Not like coming up Charter Oak or Nelson.
Nobody will give us a hard number, so they are actually going to get on the agenda for next rural water. Meeting and go down there and try to pinpoint, and we don't know if it's the engineer not talking to the board or what, cause it's just like, well, I gotta talk to the board about it, so. We don't know if the board even knows about it, or he's just trying to run defense and say, we're not gonna do this, and just trying to be polite and say. Just keep kicking a can down the road, but, so they're gonna get on the board and the agenda down there and go talk to rural water. I don't know, it just don't look good for water down there, and I don't know how you can run a park. Without water, I mean, you can't, they won't, DNR is really. I'm actually gonna put a call in the DNR myself, try to find out some information to. Sounds, you can't use it for shower or toilet, I mean.
It's non-potable.
Well, they don't sell, according to Chris, they don't wanna give us that non-potable status, like, I don't know. There's gotta be other parks in the state of Iowa that are running on untreated water. Or have some sort of treatment system in, at the park that will. Make the DNR happy.
It seems like they're tying our hands.
Well, I would, it, it feels like, yes. I don't know why, nobody drinks the water when they camp anyway, they'll bring bottled water anymore, if they drink water. I mean, otherwise, they're probably drinking something that's got a little alcohol in it, so it's probably killing germs anyway, so. Oh, we might, haven't got that far yet, but that's a good, good point, we should have, would think would have some money for that. But just, it hasn't had any water test since like ninety four, I think, so. Chris.
No, from Chris from Waker, Whitaker.
Alright. They left, chose the way the camping rates, the same for the next year, so. That was that, uh, yes, center meeting Friday, I'll be attending by Zoom. Uh, cell site contract, did we, we signed them, right, a couple of weeks ago, you texted me last night and said. We need to act on the contracts, Mike was checking on you.
Already did.
We did.
We sent all this, so I asked, I asked you, I said, we did do that, right, and I'm, cause I'm sitting there thinking, we did that. So now Mike had sent me an email.
Failed to get that contract out there, but.
Well, here's what I got from him. And see, he's talking to Greg, and Greg doesn't ever always hit reply all, so I, I, I'm getting half of the message, he might not even been talking to me. But I have no idea.
Alright.
Terry here, the cell sign, like invoices. Thank you, it's getting real now, whatever that means, see, and I think he's talking to Greg. Cause there's nobody in between his two messages there.
Well, I probably had that all, I, yeah, I'm true, we have that all, I remember signing them all, so.
And, and we did that, so then, we, we sent money to cell site or.
We are paying bills, I've been here for it.
I mean, we sent that straight to cell site, right?
We sent it to Mike and, yeah, Mike and Ray, and they sent it to them.
Yeah, just, I couldn't. I'm only getting half of the conversation.
Well, you need Jane to fill in the blanks for you. The last thing, I don't, do we. We had a meeting with representatives from the city of Denison last Thursday in regards to the comm center and, uh. There's a. Consensus that we wanna move forward and continue the conversations, but it's gonna be. Couple supervisors, a couple council members that from now on.
Yeah.
The need is there.
And probably Aaron and a board member from up there, cause we're gonna have them contribute.
Yep, we're gonna get all this.
All the contributing members.
All, all the main players together and start developing a, a plan to move forward with, uh. The county, start to, uh, manage the council. Don't know how that's gonna look yet, but.
We're getting close, or we're getting an idea.
We're getting an idea, we've, we've learned a lot already, just in the two meetings that we've had, so. I think that's really basically all I had, as we hit on everything else that I wrote down. Alright.
Oh, left side. Can I ask you a question, where you start, we were looking at your, like, Iowa's, the tire repair on there with one forty one over in Charter Oak. And it's four hundred something, is that like fixed on a payload or tire?
Tire or something, yeah, I know we had a loader tire down out here, so generally, that's what that would be. By the time we pay, by the time we pay him for it, it's, you know, a lot of stuff goes on.
So, road call. Yeah, I get it, okay, that was my.
So I'm guessing that's what that was, so.
Wasn't a lot of details, so I didn't.
Yeah, I could go check. I know we did that.
Beautiful rain.
Yeah, that, that's too much, I. Yeah, that's too much ice. We do have a utility from that here for our water line.
I say, ain't that funny, we talked about our water, try holding hostage till we get someone.
Yeah, something to pull her out of.
An Nelson Park hospital project.
Yeah, they're actually, we're waters, I've just been really good to work with.
We might need to have you help.
I don't.
Yeah.
That'd be a long drag out.
Oh, you're trying to get them to service the part.
Yeah. There's no easy way to get there.
Not out there.
Like the easiest way to come from Charter Oak, actually tie some aisles to, you don't have to cross the highway or railroad or the river.
Awesome, they probably would.
There's not.
I mean, rural waters, nice.
I know I would hook him to it if they came by my place, so. Nice to have a well. It's also nice to have a backup in case the wells go.
Yeah, yep, they just don't know, yeah, they're not, they're not very close down in that area, are they?
They come to Dow City, they don't go west.
Right.
They come to Charter Oak, but they don't go south. So. John Booger Johnson, they're just saying a lot.
Kind of barren, that's our. No man.
Well, it looks like you got length here.
I got a few things on here. He said, how much agenda, I said, me.
Yeah.
From what I saw. Yeah. Yeah, the, uh, construction projects, again, nothing new there, I just, I'm scheduled for those lettings, we'll see where that lands, we'll be good. Uh, great crew, obviously, weather, which is good, we've got rain, yeah, so we're pretty much shut down, doing equipment service.
I seen where some of our citizens were going on about their highway thirty bridge that they're working on, do you know anything about that?
Why they, this looks. Chris came through that today and I said, I don't know.
I just.
I, I, I hadn't, I, you know, I, I could probably call somebody to find out.
Sniff a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just, uh, it is odd.
That's about all I can say. I figured it was painting us, paint lines or something that wasn't getting done, so.
I don't, I don't know. So, uh, bridge crew, just going around doing some grip wrap and some tree cutting and planks. They're kind of hunker down, really good here. Both great crew and bridge crew, so, um. We'll go right down to number four there, um, this is a semi tractor and, uh, and then the trailer.
Who's yourself?
Justin Hop.
The young kid.
Yeah, he's a young guy, but he really good.
I'm trying to talk, I, I think I talked to him now on motor truck.
We, uh, yeah, we spent a good hour and a half down at the shop, kind of going through this line by line.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, I always bring Brandon in, cause you know, he's gonna be driving the truck and. To get more insight, background on trucks and anybody I know, other than maybe you, but he, yeah, so we, we kind of worked through that. And so what I wanted to pass out was that, this is what I would normally give to you at budget time and kind of say, okay, here's my equipment. Purchases and here's what I'd be moving out of the fleet to, to replace those, um. I think those prices are pretty, pretty accurate, the, the motor grater is actually four forty-three. And I asked Brandon if there was any room there, he said, no, Paul, actually there isn't, they caught up, so I was hopefully or optimistic that.
Under new last known cost.
Uh, three, actually three fifty-four.
My four deckers in the last year went up twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's crazy is what it is, uh. And, uh, the good news is, is we took action and bought those, but you know, at least they're gonna take another price increase on January one. You know, hopefully at some point this thing starts to stabilize, I saw, any inflation numbers are starting to taper off. Want to Google something interesting, Google historic inflation rates by month, by year.
Until they, until they quit screwing with the energy sector, just, yeah, just gonna keep moving.
But we've had times like this, actually much worse than this.
Well, that's, can I ask you about the semi tractor, is that what the pusher already on?
Yeah. So, so anyhow, back to the truck, what I wanted to share with you, because, okay, the, the semi, if we ordered it today, it's probably third quarter of twenty twenty-three. The trailer, if we order it today, it's March or April of twenty twenty-four.
That was.
So that's kind of, you know, uh, and to the, to everyone's credit, I mean, last year, remember last year, we bought those two dump trucks and those two motor gratters? We're sitting here kind of scratching our heads, wondering what we should do.
I was panning on about it.
Yeah. There's the best, best move we did, you know, in terms of getting equipment in the fleet, because it's gone up so much.
It's not going.
So then those prices are guaranteed.
I told him, I said, I said, I said, I got, I got, well, two questions for you, one, is there any room left here? I said, no, I said, and number two, is this the price that we're gonna pay? And he said, I guarantee you that is a pressure.
Okay.
All right, so that was his word on the phone.
Guaranteed, this price is what we're gonna pay, but he didn't say, and a little more.
Yeah. No, I, I asked.
Please, that won't be. Usually five hundred with an automatic.
This is the, yeah.
So to get a new, right now, if you buy a brand new, feedbelt five seventy-nine with a little small bunk on it, you're at a hundred and eighty. So you're probably priced pretty good for that.
And actually, the price on there, it's, we're, we're at one fifty, two fifty. So a little bit less, a little bit less, because we, well, we went, uh, we went through it line by line and they couldn't, at one time, they couldn't get. The Bridgestone tires, but now they can't get the Bridgestone, that's usually what we run, so they had Mitchell's.
Twenty-two fives, right?
Yeah, yeah, so this is, this is a, uh, you know, we, we took, we, we kind of went through it, took a few things here and there, tires was probably a big thing.
Do you have anything on twenty-four bikes? If you do change, cause they're gonna quit making that.
The twenty-four vibes, yeah, everything I, I'm aware of that.
I didn't figure you would, but I ran them because you want to keep the pots up off the ground, especially.
So, so we're at one fifty, two fifty on the semi. Um, since I priced the Trail King bottomed up trailer in October to yesterday, that went up, uh. Eight hundred and fifteen dollars, so it's seven, seventy thousand eight seventy-five, so I asked Brandon, I says, he's priced so good, he says, I don't know, Trail King. Has taken an increase, so it's at seventy thousand eight seventy-five instead of the seventy thousand sixty. So, and that's a march.
I think that's for twenty twenty-four.
So I put them on here, I wanted to show you kind of the overall plan for equipment purchases. And just share with you kind of where we're at with things, things are gonna go up, I feel. January one, we'll price the price increases on.
So you're wanting to do the bucket truck and stuff now too?
Yeah, the bucket truck is something that we do use quite a bit, it's got some age and, you know, that's something you, we inspect it every year and. It needs to go. But. I don't know if I can get one bought for thirty. The one that they want, the one that we currently have, it was fifty to fifty-five feet and we want something that was a little higher, I mean, if you're, I mean, there's some big cotton wood trees out there that we take down sometimes. If you really want to do it safely, you gotta get up there and you gotta get above the branch of your cutting and that's kind of a problem. And it's something that we, we share with the city too. They have a concrete saw, we don't have a concrete saw, so I always want to use their concrete saw. They need a big bucket truck, they kind of get our bucket truck, we do a lot of swapping back and forth. So.
So you only got on your little agenda here to, for the tractor and for the trailer.
E- exactly, this is just showing.
Rest of it's what you're looking at.
Right, and then I, I was gonna, I want to talk to you about the, the motor grater when we get done with this.
Okay.
But, everything's going up, it, 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 it just makes me cringe when I see the numbers. I don't know if we have any options, if you want to keep doing what we're doing.
But don't, like the one that, that, uh, are. Basically, you'll rotate.
It's gonna, it'll, it'll move down, twenty-seven's been kind of our, that's that old Ford, and the guys still want to keep that. But I think, you know, you're working as a truck and a trailer, we're gonna be hauling more of our own gravel.
I know, that's what we talked about.
Kind of this, we're just slow migration into us, uh, transition.
Full-time grade crew to.
Part times, yeah.
All right, I'd make a motion to purchase semi truck from Housby, one fifty-two, one fifty.
And one fifty, one hundred fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty.
For a delivery and said, and June the thirtieth, the twentieth, is that right?
But I have it in that fiscal year, so it's fiscal year twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, basically.
Twenty-three?
Actually, that should be twenty-four, it, it's fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, so it starts July first of twenty twenty-three, yeah, so it's that twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four budget year. They start twenty twenty-four budget year.
Twenty twenty-three vehicle then?
If you don't get it till twenty-three late, it'll be a twenty-four year month.
And sometimes they don't even really tell you, we're gonna build you this truck and then the model year changes whenever it does, but I'm guessing like that, it's gonna probably be.
Doesn't really matter, but.
Yes, you said third or fourth quarter.
Third quarter.
Yeah, third quarter.
The twenty twenty-three, which would be after July first.
I got a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
The movement, sign of purchase, uh, semi truck from Housby, max for one hundred and fifty-two thousand, fifty dollars, any further discussion? Favorite signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Number five on.
What was the price in eight, seventy thousand eight what?
Seventy thousand eight seventy-five.
Eighty seventy-five.
Is the price now, going up there, so I don't know if that's a problem from a publication standpoint. I was hoping I could talk, I'm gonna keep in the price, but that wasn't gonna happen.
I don't think that's a big deal.
We went down and wind it up on a little bit on the other one.
I don't, it's a big issue.
Purchase, uh, I'd make a motion to purchase the Trail King before it goes up again tomorrow. Uh, TKBD two-two dash four-three-three, bottomed up trailer from Ziegler Cat for seventy thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, the delivery ending, well, the fiscal year twenty-one, or twenty-two, twenty.
Yeah, this.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. And it probably delivered in March, you know, twenty-four.
And I don't, and I don't wanna, I, I want to mention one other thing we get into discussion.
Is our second?
Our second.
We're gonna get disc brakes on it.
I like them.
Yeah, my kids. So we had a lengthy discussion yesterday, Brett was down.
Is that on the tractor too?
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, we've never had a trailer with disc brakes on it before, they're all been drumming. You know, mechanics would prefer to stick with the drums, but Brandon was really pushing for the disc brakes. And so I said, Brad, call Trail King, find out what they're selling the most of today. I mean, these trailers are all over in all kinds of conditions and what kind of experience they're having, sixty percent of the trailers are selling are disc brakes. With disc brakes on, forty percent of the drum brakes, their claim is they'll last four times longer and we're seeing. Kind of some of that on the semi that we have currently, it's got disc brakes on, they last a lot longer and they've not had any issues and, and generally, the comic back from them was. If a person buys, a first time buyer buys disc brakes, they repeat, they're gonna buy disc brakes again. So they're seeing the trend more towards that.
They're more expensive, there's much groove in the, in the, in the rotors as you do in the drum.
Yeah.
So I mean.
It's just when you have to replace the, the rotors.
But you're getting four times the use.
You're getting a lot more use out of them and they're just so much simpler. So that's the, the new brakes.
And it's a lot harder for the DOT, well, of course, you don't worry about it like we do, but the DOT, they, they, they set themselves up and the DOT are, you know, you don't have all them, your brakes are.
Yeah, all your, all your stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that's a thing that basically went away with this break.
Automatic, automatic transmissions and disc brakes made it easy.
I'm in that group now.
Any further discussion in regards to the purchase of this truck?
No.
All right. Uh, here and I don't see the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay. I don't remember six, here's kind of a solidifying what we kind of gave the. All the purpose to work with last week to fund that twenty thousand for the consulting fees related to submission of the.
Doing that on a general?
I met with, I talked to one city council member last week and they will definitely. Through this process, one way or another, get us three members.
So we're getting that out of general for now, is that right?
I don't.
No.
It, it, it's not a big.
Where's your comment? Out of yours? Okay, well then I'd make a motion to approve the twenty thousand dollar fund for the consulting fees related to the submission of the statewide grades grant. For the Donna Reed Road Bridge over the, for Union Pacific Railroad.
I appreciate that, and I think the conversation, well, there's gonna be a lot of, well, there'll be some sharing and cost services can, with this, if the project moves forward, so. Would that funds come out of Paul's budget when it comes down to do some of them engineering things and stuff of that nature, it'll equal out at that time, so. I read through, uh, your narratives and stuff and, uh, I thought you probably nailed it pretty good, so your creative writing class in college.
That was kind of getting a little.
Everybody else is gushing too, so.
But I think we have a really good shot. So it's a, it's kind of a unique opportunity, because.
More schmoo.
Because it, well, yeah, it, it kind of speaks to the time that we're in. I think we got a really good shot at it, that's, we'll, we'll know more, the actual committee is meeting today, county engineers that are. Gonna decide which ones go for, and I talked to like two or three of them and they, they all said that this project. Kind of brings the entire package up because of all the things that it touches on, so, such good projects, that particular application. So we'll hopefully get it in there.
Painted gold and purple.
Black and gold with a Hawkeye on it, maybe. I know. Anyhow, uh, so, uh, moving on to, uh, the trip to Manila.
Oh, I got a vote on this. All in favor of approving that funding of twenty thousand dollars, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay.
And, and thank you, because without this board doing this, allowing me to do this, it isn't happening.
Yeah.
So I figured that out, I appreciate that, yeah, okay, so it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
And it'll be a good thing for the entire area, we'll get the money, so.
Well, it's connecting our road, our road is probably one of the few things developing right now.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good project, so, uh, the trip to vanilla, still on, if you all want to go down there. Yeah, I got Jeff Bloom, who's the utilities manager, and Brandon's actually gonna go down, we're gonna talk about utility connections and a whole. A great things while we're there, but this will be good.
Yeah.
That we can, not sure where this is gonna fit in the budget, you know, I haven't gone through a detailed evaluation of the twenty twenty-four budget yet, but, um. We'll see. Fuel costs continue to be.
So on our close session.
We'll see, um, the safety meeting, just to mention of that, um, you're, five, eleven thirty, yeah, um, and, uh. We kind of do a little recognition, it's just kind of a real casual safety meeting slash lunch for the guys, so you guys are welcome. But, yeah, I think I did a long time ago, that, yeah, so.
It's a surprise party for me and.
It is. If you wanted to be, okay, motor grater, so, uh, we had a technical analysis done on three of the machines that are in that, kind of that, moving into that. Spare category, um, and if I need to stop.
No, you know.
But anyhow, so, those are, these are the reports, and I, I just got them yesterday, we went through them very quickly yesterday with Brent, but the bottom line is, he said, your equipment's in really good shape. And, and so, we've had this discussion before, that we probably are gonna need to consider is, you know, running these machines longer. You know, so let's say, you know, that, 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 that kind of the. Or magnitude number was for a complete CAT certified rebuild, that's. And that's a new serial number, is three hundred thousand dollars, you know.
Hundred forty less than what you're paying for a mill.
Right, however, you, you're taking an eighty thousand dollar machine that you could sell and adding that to that, so now you have three hundred and eighty versus four hundred and forty, you know, so. However. You know, the discussion was, well, okay, if we, if we do a complete rebuild, we'll put a new engine, you know, basically a complete rebuild engine, complete rebuild transmission. Which is wrong, he says, he said, if you have one that goes down on you. And.
And then rebuild it?
Yeah. There's nothing wrong with. You got ten thousand hours on it, let's run it to thirteen or fourteen thousand, something happens, but I said, well, okay, what's the timing on that, he said, well. You know, we could have one in in a couple of months, and, you know, back to you, you know, now, who knows what.
Couple months.
Two years down the road, and hopefully nothing happens to them, but I say we keep running them, we, you know, we're gonna have to continue to buy motor graders.
So just go down and replace them one a year, is that what you're looking?
Well, we're doing one this year, but, but we can't do one a year and, and stay current with our fleet. And we're, we're looking at doing one this year. But, because some of these have lower.
What do you suggest, one, one year, two?
I, I'm saying one, yeah, one this year, and maybe two next year, yeah, yeah. You know, and I'll, I'll bring up that motor grater replacement schedule, and we've always had the good fortune of, or maybe we do one next year, and we could, you know, the thing is, is.
Do one, one, two years, and then what?
And, and then, and then do twos, you know, let them, let them all get a little more age on it, and start replacing it when they get to be thirteen, fourteen thousand hours instead of that twelve thousand. You know, and do you roll the dice a little bit, you know?
But if you do a complete rebuild at that point, then.
Well, yeah, if the engine, or the tranny goes out in it, maybe run that one in, do a complete rebuild on it. That's, that makes sense. I'm trying to figure out a way.
Like that analysis, though.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand for a rebuild, and you could have sold it for eighty thousand, so you're not, presently, you're not that much off a new one, two years from now, the way they think it's going up.
And that's if the rebuild costs, we know, because what they do is they strip it all down, and then they do.
Don't they have different levels of rebuild?
They do, yeah.
So their three hundred is your.
That's getting you basically, but I think you need to look at that tie, if you're gonna compare a new one to a, a cat rebuild, because, you know, because that is the complete rebuild. So.
And in two years, if we wait two years, that's gonna be higher than that.
Yeah, but you know, like Merit's motor grater is gonna be in a lot nicer shape than the new kids. You know, so there's the difference there, some of the motor graders are needing that complete, and other ones can probably get by.
Could go longer, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's kind of goes back, you know, when I got out of high school, if you had a car that went a hundred, ten thousand miles, it was wore out. Today, you run two hundred and twenty thousand, and they're still pretty reliable, so, you know, I think things are built and engineered pretty good, so. Carry on proposing right now.
Okay. I think that's definitely something for some serious consideration.
Yeah, so the motor grater, I'll probably bring that back next week for approval, and they gave me a trade number of seventy-eight eight for one of our N two all-wheel drives, which I thought was slow. However, you know, the same deal with CAT is that I'm gonna go. No, that's an all-wheel drive.
It's an all-wheel drive?
We have an all.
Yeah, I was hoping that'd be up in the nineties, he said, that's the best trade number. It's kind of disappointing, but I'm gonna see, you know, other quotes, because he said, you know, we can purchase the machine we're gonna purchase, and then if their quotes the best, we'll just add that.
Those are auction places we really like.
Purple wave.
Yeah. The problem is, is you have no, you have no reserve, you have no reserve, there's no, I mean, it's gone, and when you line that line, it's, the truck's gone, whatever it sells for, it sells for.
First one, we tried a lot to sour taste in their mouth.
Yeah, and I know other people have had good experiences with it, so, best experience I think we've ever had is right here.
That's right down here.
Right down here at the seal bar, and the commission stays local, you know, you're supporting a local business, and we're, we've always gotten more than we thought on equipment down here, so. So I'll probably be bringing that back, and then I've got the engineer's conference. So, under that. Just letting you know when you want to go.
Yep.
I'll give those guys down there a heads up. Okay.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Did you already meet with Chris? You said.
Chris Whittaker, yeah, Brad wanted to. Okay, so, and then he was coming over here.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to citizens input, before we go on to closed session.
This feels kind of.
Mr. Bowman?
I will be very brief today. I guess, first of all, I just want to thank the board for your diligent work on the carbon ordinance that you put diligently in pass last week, I believe. I was excited that the county attorney's office has filed a statement of participation, I'm not sure exactly. To what endeavor that will be, but it's occurring, I guess, as we're here today with I B meeting in Des Moines, I want to thank the media. For covering these important topics, I feel, and, and educating the public, and then I just want to also encourage your continued support for the pipeline ordinance, I know that you're in the thick of that, and so we. Appreciate your efforts, if you can do, to support everyone in the county and everybody, so, thanks, bud.
Thanks, Dan.
Christmas, we don't see. Dan, you know?
Yeah, I was wondering, is, is the county, has the county received any legal. Threat from anyone over the pipeline?
Not that I'm aware of.
I missed a question, sorry.
Oh, has the county received any, any legal threat from anyone over the proposed ordinance?
I would, no, I wouldn't call it a threat, what we have received, I have received a letter from General Counsel for Summit. Kind of explaining their position, which is more or less a rehash of the story county, Shelby County petitions.
Okay.
Explaining their side of things. Because they know the county's considering.
All right, and is the county suing anybody?
We don't have an.
Right, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just. For twenty-one point five one C, it's litigation that's imminent, or a closed session, I'm just curious about that thinking process.
Oh, would the county's considering, like you said, a pipeline ordinance, right, hazardous liquid ordinance, we know from Shelby County, Story County, that Summit Carbon Solutions has filed suit against them. Already, which means, in my estimation, if the county were to adopt a pipeline ordinance, we would be in line for it. Litigation from some of it, that's, that's part of what we consider in our closed session.
I think the Public Information Board would say that that is possible, but not imminent, I'm. I'm not a legal expert, but I was, I was just curious about it, they, the, I did would say that possible litigation isn't the reason for a close session.
No, the buzzword is imminent, and, you know, we have. The board is considering an ordinance, and we know from two counties that have ordinances already that they have been sued, and I think it stands to reason that county adopts an ordinance. Where possibly in line to be sued, and part of the consideration of the closed session is. Discussing that likelihood, discussing the next steps for the county, considering this litigation that we know is already happened. And so, I think it'd be unwise not to consider that. In bold, straight ahead, into an ordinance, and then find ourselves in litigation next week, so I think it's imminent enough to call.
That is one more question.
Anybody else?
The filing to participate in I B session this morning, are, are there details of that?
So we are going to be watching, I don't know how much participating, but our filing was just that we're following the legal procedure, any position as to for against pipelines, that's faint by.
And to participate, we had to make that filing just to participate, and so Martha will be kind of doing that at the same time as we're doing the rest of this, because it's going from like nine thirty to twelve thirty.
And to keep your nose in the game, basically.
We appreciate that. Okay. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. For Iowa code twenty-one point five one C. To move and second to enter closed session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?